Good evening. The April 12th, 2018 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Aradney McBride, a fifth grade student at Longview Christian School. Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the City Council of Longview and their willingness to serve and their integrity and for their commitment. And God, we ask you to bless their work, give them wisdom, help them increase their Thank you, God, for the fruit of their labor and the safety and the growth and development of the city and for the deduction and all of the things that are fun to do and for the infrastructure. And Lord, I am grateful for the opportunity to pray and for the freedom we have as Christians to call upon the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Aradney, thank you so much for doing that for us. Here's a breath of fresh air tonight. Thank you.
Tonight in our employee recognition, we're going to recognize our Longview Public Safety Communications. Every year during the second week of April, telecommunications personnel in the public safety community are honored. The Longview Public Safety Communications Division serves as the 911 answering point and dispatch center for the Longview Police, Fire, and EMS Services. Spread across four shifts of dedicated women and men, this diverse group of employees provides emergency communication services 24/7. Based on current trends, in 2018, Longview PSC will receive approximately 260,000 inbound phone calls, resulting in around 160,000 dispatch calls for service. This torrid pace, along with the training and licensing requirements and constant multitasking responsibilities, combined to create an incredibly rigorous work environment. The division is able to consistently meet its goals of seeing 98% of high priority calls dispatched within 60 seconds and 98% of lower priority or report calls within 10 minutes. No one calls 911 when things are going well. Whether that unfortunate emergency or circumstances arise in the middle of the night, on a weekend, or during a holiday, the Public Safety Communications must always be there, ready to respond positively and assertively. During tonight's council, we have Matt Amesworth, Sherinda Neville, Kimberly Chandler, Michael Yates, Randy Ross, Kristy Trumbull, Autumn Growth, and James Shrewsbury. Please come forward. And I know I did not hit those names all right. Sorry. Did y'all catch what I was saying? 260,000 inbound, that's almost as many calls as I take bringing the mayor of this town. It's taxing, I'm telling you. It's unbelievable. But that's an incredible number. The volume is astounding. But what's even more astounding is the result we get from that volume. 98% high priority calls dispatched within 60 seconds. You know what that means? That's difference in life or death. That's what that means. And that's what these individuals do on a daily basis. And don't ever take it for granted when they're up there doing their job that they're not on point at all times. And your intensity, your devotion to this community is so, so much appreciated that there's just, there's no way to express what we feel about it. But you save lives every day, do it with a smile on your face, although you can't see the smiles, we know they're smiling because you go back to doing your job. We appreciate that very much. Thank you all so much for what you do. Amazing. Amazing. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. And I have a proclamation, but it's basically the same thing that I've already said, so I'm just going to give this to you guys. And although it does say that, you know, April 12th, National Public Safety Communication Day in Longview, so thank you all very much. Thank you once again for sending loud. And if you've ever had to call 911, which I hope you never have to, but if you do, you will be so impressed at how calm and collected they are, how soothingly on the phone, they make sure they get every detail and they answer the questions and they, they're there with you the whole time. They don't leave you. And it's such, it's such a testament to what they do every day. It's just really, really great for our city. We appreciate that job that's done very well. Thank you so much. Community recognition. This is a fun one for me. It's great for our community. On March 24th, the City of Longview collaborated with several community partners to host our first Homeless Resource Day. We had 44 booths and service areas with approximately 350 attendees. In addition to the many formal nonprofit and government entities you would expect to be involved, there were also 55 volunteers who came to help from schools, churches, and just to provide general support. We could not have done this event without these individual volunteers who provided their time and made generous donations to make the event happen. Here are just a few of the things that happened that day. Breakfast and lunch were provided, health screenings were given, animals were vaccinated, identification cards were started, 200 bus passes were distributed, more than 100 haircuts were given, 500 outreach bags were created and distributed. Tonight, we have a few of those volunteers that helped make that day possible, and I'd like you to please come forward. Amanda Harrison, Frank Thompson with Cut and Salon, stylists from CNS that are here, Cleo Watley with the Pine Tree IST High School, the Boys and Girls Clubs. Y'all, please come forward. Where's the Boys and Girls Clubs?
I think they're outside, Andy. I saw them out there.
Grab those Boys and Girls Clubs and know they're here. Come on, gang. Y'all, come on up. Thank you. I don't know how many of y'all attended that Resource Day we had on the 24th, but if you didn't, you, you should next year, or the next one that we have, because it was an outpouring of love and kindness and generosity from our community, people who need love, kindness, and generosity in more ways we could ever imagine. Because remember this, with the flip of a coin, that could be you or I out there instead of them. And so, if you're not willing to put yourself out there and do something, how could you ever expect to have someone do something for you? And every one of you all, you all did something. You all did tons. And, you know, when this, when this whole concept started, this service fair, I remember when, you know, Julie Wood sitting back there helped me with the Facebook post, we put on there with some, we're looking for people to cut hair, you know? We just thought, let's throw some things out there and see who will respond. Well, Connie Rash from CNS, I mean, immediately, we're in. And then bam, look what happens. Then others, and Gina, Gina cuts my hair. People started responding, and then people started saying, hey, how can I help? And all of a sudden, the snowball started rolling forward. And when the snowball rose forward, we helped people. And we helped a lot of people. You all helped a lot of people that day. And they'll never be able to say thank you, but I'm saying thank you for them to you all. So, we appreciate what these people have done, the time you spent. You know, you spent your Saturday doing things that you could have been doing other things. You could have been minding your business, making your own money, doing your things, and you all chose to come and help other people. And it's not going to be forgotten. We appreciate y'all very much. With bottom of the City of Longview's heart, we thank you for being, being there and serving our community. Thank you so much. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm going to tell you, I tried to let them give, let me give a haircut. Nobody would let me give them a haircut. I wanted that so bad. It was so cool. Y'all, come on up close. Got it? Did we get it? Okay, we're good. Thank you all so much. Y'all are the best. Y'all are Go Giveer Longview. Thank you so much. And once again, I want to thank city staff, council members that participated, everyone that took part in that event. It definitely made a difference, and the love was felt that day by many, many people. So, thank you all very much for, for your participation.
We're to citizen comment. I have one speaker card, Mr. Sidney Allen.
Good evening, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to say first that I'm a lot more nervous standing here than I was sitting in your place many years back. It's, it's a whole different situation. Again, I am Sidney Allen. I live in Longview at 1003 Quiet Shadows. Thank you, Mayor Mack, city council officials, city manager, Mr. Bonds, for this opportunity to appear in front of you. Can I take just a minute and give you a handout on an information sheet here?
You can, but you know your time is running, Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Floyd.
As I said before, I had the privilege of serving for nine years representing District Six on the council. I have come before you today to propose an idea that I've been working on for several months. First, I'd like to apologize to Ms. Naughty and Mr. Wade for not being able to personally get by and visit with you on this item. I apologize for that. All right. My proposal that I'm talking about tonight is to rename the newly constructed extension of George Ritchie Road from between Highway 259 and Gilmer Road to Bill Stout Parkway. Judge Stout has been a community leader in Longview Gregg County for the past 40 years. Judge Stout was first elected to the office of Gregg County Judge in 2003. Under Judge Stout's leadership, Gregg County has worked with the City of Longview on numerous projects for the benefit of the community as a whole. I have given you a recap of Mr. George Ritchie from our Longview News Journal publication. You also have a copy of the Texas Department of Transportation Award that Judge Bill Stout received in 2010 in Austin. This award is given only once each year to one recipient for recognition of support of road and infrastructure projects in the state of Texas. This is known as the Official Roadhand Award by the State Tech Doc. I stand here tonight and ask each of you and the mayor to recognize Judge Bill Stout by renaming this section of the road in his honor as a show of appreciation for his leadership on this project and others that have aided the City of Longview. During my previous term on the city council, the idea of extending George Ritchie Road from Gilmer Road through to Highway 259 was proposed. We were told at that time by Tech Doc, Texas Department of Transportation, that a project of this size had a, was that three minutes? Can I get just a minute more?
We'll, we'll grant you a few more seconds. Yes, sir.
Okay. That a, a project of this size had a 15 to 20 minute time span before construction could begin. With Judge Stout's leadership, Gregg County, the City of Longview, Longview Economic Development, and Texas Department of Transportation were able to form a joint venture and accelerate this project to its current completion. I personally visited with the mayor, city council, city officials, and Tech Doc concerning this renaming. I would like to stress the point that this is my idea totally. Thank you for this opportunity to come and meet with you. I would be glad to visit further with each of you on this proposal. One quick, on a different subject, I want to stand here tonight and thank Dr. Andy Mack for his great work with Governor Abbott in bringing the Dollar General facility to this area. If you haven't been out there, you need to go by and look. It's very impressive. Thank you, Dr. Mack.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We appreciate you. I have no other speaker cards. Any of us like to speak and fill out a card subsequently? Very well. We are now to presentation items. I'd like to present a proclamation for the Gregton Rotary PRCA Rodeo Day in Longview. Come on forward, Ms. Karen. Come on up here, David. All you Rotarians, come on up.
In case you don't know, the rodeo starts next weekend. And in case you've never been, you are really missing out. The rodeo is an absolute blast. I'm riding a bull this year. Not. I wanted, I wanted to do the mutton busting though, because I can be good at that. But the rodeo is a blast. You'll see so many people out there, have fun, get to see the facilities that we have. The quality of the rodeo is unbelievable for, for, for Longview. And so, we're, we're proud of that. We're proud of the Rotary Club. Y'all do such a great job. You, you're out there volunteering, you provide the citizens with a wonderful event, and it's, it's great for our community. So, Longview PRCA Rodeo Day, April 21st, 2018. So, whereas Longview Gregton Rotary Club has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April 21st, 2018 as Longview's PRCA Rodeo Day in the City of Longview, and the, and the Longview Gregton Rotary Club contributes to the quality of life in the City of Longview and Gregg County by providing community events that also serve as fundraisers and through which a multitude of local nonprofit organizations have benefited. So, now therefore, Andy Mack, by authority vested in his mayorcy of Longview, proclaim April 21st, 2018 as the Longview Gregton Rotary PRCA Rodeo Day in Longview. Karen, that's for you. And, and seriously, the rodeo is not just a ton of fun, it's more than that. It provides so much from the Rotary Club that goes back into our community, that supports activities and, and organizations that really need that. And so, come on out, join the fun. Rain or shine, doesn't matter, it's still a lot of fun. It's not always, can't control the weather in April, but last year, you know, rained a little bit, didn't rain a little bit, worried about thunderstorms, not worried about thunder, it's still a great time. So, make, make plans, come out Friday and Saturday night. What time's it start?
7:30, but the gates open at 5:30.
5:30, gates open? And there's tons of good food out there, too. There's tons of food trucks, there's all kinds of events to do out there. It's not just the rodeo. There's entertainment. It's a blast. So, come on out, be a part of what we're, what we're doing in Longview and Gregg County and Gregton Rotary Club for, for the city. So, thank you all very much. It's a pleasure.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Michael. Thank you all. Damn, we got lots of city staffs out here.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Look forward to it. Okay, public safety update. Chief Stillman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things that have happened in the fire department since we last met. And I'll go ahead and warn you, this may be a little lengthy. I'm going to poach a little of Chief Bishop's time since he couldn't be here tonight, and I'm not going to apologize for that. First and foremost, we'd like to recognize the 28 and a half years of service of Captain Phil Weiss. Captain Weiss retired recently since our last council meeting, put in a lot of good years with the fire department. He was one of those early EMS guys that transitioned into the fire department when the city took over the ambulance service. Great guy, great guy to have in the field, and a great guy to be standing over you if you're in it, having a bad day medically wise. He was always there to take care of people. So, we certainly appreciate his dedicated service to the city for that length of time. Not sure if you were able to see the newspaper this week. I want to thank Jimmy and the newspaper for doing such good coverage of our awards recognition banquet that was held last Friday night. Most of you were there, and I certainly appreciate the support. But we took time out, as we do every year, to recognize the efforts of some of our people and just what they're going to consider their every ordinary, ordinary job that they do each and every day. These guys had some great testaments, some great calls that they had made, and they were certainly each worthy of recognition in their own way. This is very important for us that we recognize those types of achievements of our people. They, they are what keep our department strong. I, I got to give a quick shout out to the Longview Professional Firefighters Association who actually sponsors and puts this event together. Those guys do a wonderful job. Colin Whitley is the coordinator for that, so I got to give a quick shout out to him. A lot of work behind the scenes to pull this off. So, just a great night had by all, and we got to really recognize some great people doing great work on behalf of the City of Longview. Next up, members of our TIFMS team. This is the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System. This is where we are sometimes called to deploy personnel at any corner of the state of Texas. The, the geography of the state of Texas is so vast, and the types of topography and terrain that are out there are so mixed, that we recently had the opportunity to do some real live wildland fire training up in Wood County. This was done right after Easter. It was the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, right after Easter weekend, where we got to send our people up and do what, we participated in what's called a prescribed fire. There's a landowner up there that has about a 10,000 acre farm, and they were kind enough to let us come in and construct fire lines and practice how we're going to respond to this stuff. And it was a lot of good hands-on, a lot of our guys are working on credentialing and taskbooks, and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to get up there, work together, do that aspect of firefighting that we just don't really get that opportunity to do a lot of in Longview. And that's not a bad thing, but when we do get called out, we want to make sure that we have trained and prepare people that can keep themselves safe and go out, go out there and serve others in an appropriate fashion. So, just a great time. I appreciate everybody that participated in that three days' worth of training. This week, we are conducting our annual rail tank car safety course. As you know, we've been doing this for about 21 years now. Longview is a great platform for this type of a course because of our history with the railroad industry, not just on the manufacturing side, but the, you know, just the volume of train traffic that comes through here. We have the vendors, we have the industry here in town that can really support a program like this, and it's so unique that this is probably only one of two places in the country where you can get this level of hazardous materials specialized training. So, we've had people in here with us all week. They'll be wrapping up tomorrow. So, 32 students representing four different states, a myriad of instructors and experts that are out there in the field dealing with these types of emergency responses every day. So, just another great opportunity for us to give something back to emergency service response, and again, market Longview and have these people come in here to get that level of training. I kind of wish Chief Bishop was here for this one, but I didn't want to hold it off anymore. We were very fortunate that a few weeks ago, well, actually, a few months ago, the PD challenged the fire department to a basketball game. And y'all know the history. We bowl, we golf, we do a lot of different things. And they wanted to take us on in a basketball game, so we obliged. And a big shout out to Luton University for hosting this and sponsoring it. It was a great event. Those guys, I didn't get to stay for the whole game, but it, those guys, it was a hard-fought basketball game. But at the end of the day, the fire department won in overtime. So, we certainly, again, I appreciate PD for challenges to this. It was a great time by all. I don't think PD was all that happy when they left, but, you know, better luck next year, maybe we can find another sport. I, I'm, we're game, just whatever. We had a great time. I want to thank the guys that gave up some of their time to come out and play basketball that day. Great camaraderie by all. This morning, we took the opportunity to recognize some tenure achievements of several of our employees. These guys hit one of those valuable marks in the service of their, or in the history of their career, at the five-year mark, 10-year, 15, 20, so forth. Three of these members did have 20 years of service in the fire department world. That's a, that's a milestone. So, certainly congratulations to each and every one of them, and keep on trucking. These guys are doing great. And, and as a 20, almost a 28-year guy, I can tell you, you blink and it's going to be gone. It just doesn't seem like, for me especially, that I've been working for the city for that long. But these guys are doing great work, and I appreciate all of their help out there. We got that head opportunity earlier, a couple, actually, a couple of weeks ago, to participate with a career day presentation at the Longview Early Graduation High School. Again, these are students that are, they're going to be entering the workforce. You know, we have a big move to keep local kids local, and we certainly wanted to make them aware of the career opportunities that they have, not just in the fire department or the police department, but for the City of Longview as well. Lot of great opportunity for people that want to come to work and serve others. Want to throw this out there real quick. We are expecting some inclement weather tomorrow. There's, there's a very dynamic system that's going to be approaching sometime right after lunch. We want our citizens to monitor the weather tomorrow and take, take, just be sure that they're taking proper precautions about timing and planning and how they're going to carry out their day. We participated on a weather conference, call it 10 o'clock this morning, and the National Weather Service is actually on point because of this system. They're expecting a lot of high winds, large hail, leading tornadoes at the beginning of the front. So, just please pay attention to the weather and the conditions and how that, how that will be quickly evolving tomorrow, especially in the afternoon and into the overnight period. And I couldn't say that without marketing code red a little bit. We do have a weather notification system that's a free service of the city. Go to the city's website and you can find out about how to get yourself registered for that, to get that up to date, moments notice information that something bad may be happening out there regarding the weather. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have one question for you, Chief. So, you've done softball?
I forgot about softball.
Basketball?
Yes, sir.
Golf? What other sport is there that y'all are going to try?
You know, we tried football at one time, and risk management said we could never do that again, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Darts, I, you know, we're game.
You're awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, we're not a consent agenda. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to zoning. Public hearing, the health and security application Z-1803. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately .159 acres of abstract 186 out of the D Sanchez survey tract 11, section four, from single family four seen here in the blue, to general relo, uh, general retail located at 4120 Gilmer Road. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers on this item? Any council discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, the security application PD-18-04. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD-17-04 to build cover storage buildings for storage of recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers. This planned development will continue to allow the existing property owner to utilize the property for mini warehouse and storage, and along with RV storage and rental. The uses that would not be permitted in this zoning category would include billiard, parlor, pool hall, dance hall, nightclub, sexually oriented businesses, and package stores. Planning and zoning commission, along with city staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Council? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. It's all the zoning we have for this meeting. Now, to action item. Consider resolution between the City of Longview and the Miracle League of East Texas. Mr. Karen.
Good evening. About five years ago, the Miracle League of East Texas was founded to provide a fully accessible baseball softball field in the City of Longview at Lear Park, and that came to fruition this past fall. And like we do with all other youth organizations for operating on our fields, we felt it was appropriate to have an, an agreement for operating that. This one's a little bit different and unique because the Miracle League did raise all the funds to be able to provide for the construction of that facility, so there is a little concession given for, for them to be able to do that. And of a note, they were scheduled to start play this past Saturday. However, the weather did not cooperate. Doesn't sound like it may cooperate again this weekend, but hopefully they'll be able to begin play this Saturday. And so, they would encourage anybody to come out there and help them. They do need assistance as well. But anyway, this is for the operating agreement between the Miracle League and the City of Longview to be able to maintain the facility into the future.
Any question, Mr. Karen, on this issue?
Well, number one, I'm just, I'm really pleased that the city does partner with the Miracle League on this project. This is such an important addition to our Lear Park complex and to the community and for all of East Texas, for the families and those kids involved, because they deserve that right to play just like everybody else. And so, it's a testament to the donors that have come forth, the Miracle League Board, our Parks Department that have been so instrumental in this whole process, and so, I appreciate all that y'all have done, Scott, and thanks for getting this agreement together. So, is there a motion on this?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. As a community interest, Mr. Moore.
One last time, invite people to come to a historical marker workshop hosted by the city's planning and zoning department and the county's historical commission, Saturday, April twenty-first, ten AM, Development Services Building down on South High. If you've ever wanted to learn how to go about researching to get a historical marker, this is the place to be on the twenty-first. Second, tonight, we appointed Matthew Prosser as one of my representatives from District One on the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. He is replacing Gerald Morris. Gerald and his wife moved to Fort Worth to be closer to their family. Gerald spent years on the planning and zoning commission, and I don't believe ever missed a meeting of the CPAC group. And I just want to publicly thank Gerald for his service to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and Gerald as well. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who attended a town hall on last week, pretty good turnout. Thank you especially to city staff and to co-council that attended. I also, along with Councilman Ed Moore, had someone appointed to the comprehensive plan, Anitra Anderson. I want to say thank you for her willingness to do that. The lady that is leaving, she's a new grandmother, so she's wanting to spend time with her grandchild, so the replacement will be Anitra Anderson, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Good evening, everyone. Just today, I had a meeting with Mr. Bonds and the city staff to start to research in my district, District Three, of creating a quiet zone. We have a train that runs through District Three, probably from two AM in the morning to roughly six AM, and so those are one of the things that I will be picking up and following up with Mr. Bonds and city staff. Thank you.
You also have a town hall meeting.
And. Who is that guy?
Good-looking guy. Good-looking guy.
Almost scared me. Yes, everyone is pleased, it's my very first one, my very first District Three Town Hall meeting, or town meeting, in partnership with Mrs. Shan Bauer, who is doing a great job for the area. Be at Hudson Pepp Elementary School, Thursday, May third, six PM. Everyone, please come out, because I plan on doing a lot of listening and not a lot of talking, so please come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you for recognizing that for me.
Yes, sir. Ms. Ishihara.
I don't, yep, I do have a slide, just wanted to again remind folks that the Wine Festival is coming up Saturday, April twenty-eighth, it will be from noon till seven at our new beautiful outdoor venue, The Green, and it's gonna be a great event. If you want to just attend and enjoy the music, food, that part is free, you will park at Longview Fairgrounds and shuttle over to The Green. If you want to enter the wine circle, you will have to buy a ticket, and of course, be twenty-one years of age or older. But it'd be a great event, and we are expecting many people to attend, so please come out for that.
Fantastic. Mr. Wright.
Once again, I want to invite everybody to our PRCA rodeo next Saturday, and, well, Friday and Saturday. We have some of the top cowboys and cowgirls in the country that'll be there. As was mentioned, we have food trucks and great food, and it'll be a great time for everybody, so come on out. Also, I want to thank, I was going down Lake LeMans Road today, and hurt between Highway eighty and Cotton Street, and First Capital, I believe it was, there were several women out picking up trash, and if you've ever driven down Lake LeMans in that section, it can get really filthy. So, I wanted to thank them for being out there, picking it up, and it was kind of unfortunate. As soon as I pulled out onto eighty, there was a white pickup truck waiting to turn down Lake LeMans, the guy in there reached out, threw trash on the ground. It was kind of disappointing to see that with those other people out there working to clean things up. That's it.
Mr. Pirtle.
I also had to replace one of the members of the Comprehensive Plan Board with Mr. Charles Forio. I wanted to thank him for taking that on, and I think he'll enjoy it, he's been real involved in it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bonds.
I don't think so.
Okay, I do, quite a bit. Where are we going first? Recycle drop-off, litter cleanup, eight AM to noon, Saturday, April fourteenth, Lear Park, go to longviewtexas.gov/lgc. Okay, y'all, every year, Sean. What, say it again?
Chataqua.
I have never pronounced that right. I've called it Chatacua, Charakwa, Chataqua. Okay, go see what it's all about, learn how to pronounce the name, it's gonna be awesome. Saturday, April fourteenth, ten thirty to three PM. It's a great event, I just can't say it right, so glad to have that going on here in the community. We have photo contests, show your best photo of life in East Texas. More information, go to longviewtexas.gov/fotos, that's a pretty cool deal, too. Share your photos, there's some really neat things that come through there, it's a lot of fun, so please do that. Get involved in your community with serving the city of Longview Board or Commission, apply by April the thirtieth. You know, this is a very important aspect of our community. You serve as a liaison to the council to provide information, areas of expertise where you have information that we don't always have up here, so, you know, find your niche. If you want to volunteer, come and volunteer at the city of Longview, we have a place, we can plug you in, we can make you productive and useful for us and for the community, so we look forward to that, we want you to come and apply by April thirtieth, and we'll be putting you on those boards, commissions, and helping our community move forward in a very positive way. Municipal events. Fifth Annual Family Reunion, yeah. What are y'all doing to me? Okay, this is pretty cool, you know, this is something I wanted to put up here, because this is benefiting our East Texas food banks. The pantries are bare, I know this is in Mountain Enterprise, we usually try to stay within thirty miles of Longview when we're doing these kind of things, but this is gonna be a really neat thing, where there's gonna be a lot of bands there, a lot of food, a lot of fun, and it helps the East Texas Food Bank, that's why I put it up here, because it helps our East Texas area. So, you know, if you have time, jump out there, we have another slide on that, don't we? There you go, April thirteenth, oh, no, that's in it, okay, that is on the, the reunion is, what date was that on?
Twelfth to the fourteenth.
Twelfth to the fourteenth, that's right, that's this coming weekend, twelfth to the fourteenth in Mountain Enterprise, so try to join that if you can. Downtown Live, April thirteenth, last weekend, we got rained out, this weekend, we're moving it to Old Horse Brewing Company, so downtown live lives, so go out there and enjoy that, it's a ton of fun, see lots of people that you'll know. Longview PR, and thanks for Old Horse, Oil Horse, and the people performing for being flexible and being willing to kind of do a little bit different and jump out to something else, so it'll be a lot of fun. Here we are, PRCA rodeo, twenty-first and twentieth. Once again, it's a blast, if you don't come out there, you won't see me riding a bull or mutton busting, so it could happen. The crawfish, Harvest Festival Crawfish Boil, Saturday, April twenty-first, three to ten PM, Mon Cobb, that's a, it's a bomb, that thing is crazy. Great crawfish, great food, great entertainment with the people there, and it benefits the Harvest Festival. Those kids, they spend so much time working hard, and these monies go to help those kids. It's a zoo, it's a fun time, two different servings, try to get tickets, they sell out every single year, it's crazy, it's fun, but get out there and do that, and then go across and go to the rodeo, it's a great time to be in Mon Cobb Rodeo Arena area. Upcoming community events, okay, Mayor Mack survey. All right, this is important, I wanted to ask y'all this question. Would you support the creation of a manufacturing academy to help area high school students who are not college-bound obtain the skills to allow them into the workforce?
Yes.
Six percent said no. I'm just, maybe they don't know how to read or whatever, I don't know. Who would not, who would not support that? This is something that is, I think it's gonna happen, I mean, there are people that are working on this every single day. This came about a year ago last January, when this concept was birthed, between the four superintendents of our area schools, because I felt like there needed to be something, some bridge between the kids getting out of high school, the ones that are not going to college, and giving them a chance to have a better life, and it really stemmed from when we were in such a dire stretch, when we were having the violence in our community, and I was seeing the kids involved in this violence, and knowing these are kids that our kids grew up with, and that had been in our houses, and now they're either in jail or laying in the streets dead, and it bothered me to no end, I couldn't sleep at night, and I had one of these kids that had spent time in my house with my son, send me a text, and that text will always remain in my phone, because it was a plea for help, it was a cry for, "Help me find a way out of this life that I don't want to be in, but I have no choice but to be in, because it's all I have, it's all I know, I don't have any other skills or any other job." And so, I think this is important, and I think this is good for our community, and I think this is something we need to all get behind, and I know our industry has gotten behind this, Leadco is behind, the Chamber's behind it, there are people working on this every single day, because this needs to happen, this needs to, this needs to give our kids that aren't gonna go to college a chance to obtain certifications in jobs that will go to work in our businesses here in Longview, who need workers. You know, we need the workers, they don't have enough to hire, and yet we have kids with no jobs, so why can't we put A and B together and equal a win? And that's what this is all about, and I'm really indebted to the people that have really stuck their neck out and pushed this agenda forward, because it was just an idea, but the idea is forming into something that could be, it could be generationally changing for our community. And when you allow these kids to come out of high school with the ability to go to a job that they can be proud of, they can make money, they can provide for their families, they can have the things that they want, Longview wins, and those kids win, and their families win, and those generations win. And so, find a way to support this, find a way to get involved in this, because every one of us can help this project move forward. We hope to have enrollment starting this fall. A site has been obtained, plans are being made to get the curriculum together, the industry in town has, they're setting up, let me kind of, now, this is not what we all expected, but I'm gonna tell you how this thing's working. Jim, I'm okay, this is still out of community interest, man, okay, so chill. We're wanting these kids to come out of high school, with two years of high school, with something they can do, and these companies are providing mentorships and internships for them to come to their businesses, Kamatsu and Eastman and Aonko, all of them, they're jumping out there and they're saying, "We'll give these kids a job, complete the training," and they're giving us the information they need to be trained, they're showing us what these kids need to work in these industries that are right here in our community. So, it's such a, it's such a great opportunity that we need to be on board with this, and we need to support this every way that we can, because this will change our community, it will change lives that don't have any other way to change that life. And so, for you, six percent, I want you to come talk to me, I want to know why you wouldn't support this, because I'm, this is one of those things where I want to say why, because I want to know why. There's nothing about this that's as bad, everything about this is good, it's a positive in every way for our community, for these kids, so, okay, enough said. If y'all want to know more about it, please come see me, because I'm excited about this, I'm excited about the people involved with this, and I'm excited about the opportunity we have for our kids to come out of something where they can turn no good into good, and then that's important. Okay, here's my fun one. How many of y'all like crawfish, number one? If I had five hands, I'd raise all five of them. I can eat crawfish every night, I love crawfish. So, what's your favorite accompaniment to a great batch of crawfish? Potatoes, corn, mushrooms, sausages, artichokes, why would great crawfish need a compliment? Okay, thirty-eight percent potatoes, it was the winner. My favorite, artichokes, got one percent. One percent, okay, okay, how many of y'all ever tried artichoke in the crawfish boil? It is fantastic. Artichokes, it's kind of like a mushroom, it soaks up that juice, it's really good, give it a try. So, artichokes, one percent, sausage, eleven percent, mushrooms, nine percent, and corn, thirty-one percent. So, fun, and why would great crawfish need a compliment, ten percent?